I'd like to go ahead and call the Tuesday, February 6, 2018, Warrenton Board of Alderman Meeting Session. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the Consent of Gen.
The regular meeting minutes from January 16, 2018.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent of Gen arguments.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Deloitte, over by go please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Next item of the General hearing from the public, if you have anything you'd like to discuss with us, please come to the podium, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak. Alright, not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next will be Board of Alderman comments.
I have one, it's in reference to municipal, a letter we got from the municipal league about House Bill 2242, and it's one that's going to establish municipal government expenditure database to be maintained by the State Treasurer, Eric Schmidt, and I would want to know if our city is going to respond to this, I'm sure this may be a question for Terry, but it sounds like it's another, to me, government overreach, or there's already something there that is covering this, what they're going to ask from the municipalities, and now they just want to put a closer watch on it or something. So I would like, I don't know if any of the other members of the board read through it, but I think it's something that each municipality ought to respond to, and if nothing else, get a better understanding of really why we need, why they think they need this, because it's going to be another cost to the cities and the state of Missouri and...
So Mike, are you talking about another unfunded mandate?
Right, yeah, it's just, yeah, and I think we need to address the Missouri Legislature over it, and like I say, either state, you know, we don't think it's needed, or at least look into it and see why they think it's needed, because what they, the way they got it spelled out, it doesn't sound like it's something we really need, it's just another layer of... So like I said, I think this might be something for Terry.
And it probably will be, but I did read through it, but the thing I didn't see, maybe you did, and maybe I missed it, has it hit the House floor yet? I thought it was being presented or on sleek being presented, to see if we had time to actually formally state.
You're supposed to conduct a hearing on it tomorrow, Wednesday, February 7, at 12 noon, in the House Hearing Room, so, you know, it's...
Yeah, and if we can't respond before they have a hearing, it still has to go to the Senate, so we can formulate something.
We can still formulate, I think, yeah, we can't be there, I don't think we have a chance to be there tomorrow maybe, but again, I think it's important for all the municipalities to get involved and answer it. I don't know.
I think that's the idea.
What do you think, have the rest of you read it and understand it?
I have not, but I've really...
Again, I think, second, you know, between the mayor and Terry, I think...
No, I think what we can do is, if nothing else, we can, if we need a quick response to it, we talked to Terry tomorrow, let's put out something and more information than we can for everybody to see an email, and then we can even, you know, it is slated, we are allowed to answer in response by email, so we may do that just to get something quickly. If there's a reason, then agree with that.
I'll hold for that.
Yeah, okay. We'll put out some education tomorrow, and then we'll get a response.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright. Next item would be the Mayor's comments.
Just to be honest with you, I really didn't have anything prepared today, and I'm going to be honest about that, but I also know that, speaking with somebody else who's next on the agenda, I was quite impressed with some things, I'm going to let him fill you in on some things that happened these past, this past week and a half. So with that, I'm going to go to the next item, would be, well, Chief, would you like to introduce your officer?
The Patrolman Kevin Swafford is going to talk to you tonight about the event at Walmart, as well as the upcoming Polar Plunge.
Last weekend, I was able to be involved with, it's called Walmart for Heart, or Walmart Heart. If you're not familiar with it, back in 2006, four truck drivers from Walmart started it out in Indiana, and they just wanted to build relationships in their community, and they started looking for underprivileged kids and special needs kids, kids that were on their last leg, getting ready to die, give something back to them, something special for them, and they started basically kind of adopting them, gave them their own uniform, made them honorary truck drivers, did a whole parade with them to their local Walmart, and then gave them a shopping spree, and it was all funded by the truck drivers. So, a couple of our girls from Warrenton, Emily and Sarah Carroll, they're some of our Special Olympic athletes, they have a family member down in St. James that nominated them, and they were picked. Our Walmart found out about it, or they, the truck drivers contacted our Walmart saying, hey, we're coming to your town for these two kids. One of the management there, their kid goes to our school, she knows that our department and myself are very involved with Special Olympics, she contacted me at school and said, hey, this is what we got going, we'd really like it if you could come out and help. So from there, I went to Lieutenant Weber and asked him if we could help out with it, he was 100% on board along with Chief, so I sent out an email and text message to everybody in the county and said, hey, this is what we got going, we're going to escort them from the high school to Walmart and throw them a big party, Walmart's already got the, everything ready to go. So between myself, one of our other patrolmen that was working that day, county, state sent two EMS and fire in Truesdale, we escorted six semi trucks from the high school to Walmart here in town. Emily and Sarah were given uniforms with their names on it and everything, just like what the truck drivers wear, they were in the front two semis, and then the back four semis. We got to Walmart, they had a bunch of people out hooting and hollering, we did a balloon release in memory of Emily and Sarah and some of the kids that have since passed, that have been a part of the program. We went inside, they had pizza, cake, big party for Emily and Sarah, all the first responders stayed for that, it was a lot of fun. They were each given $350 in Walmart gift cards, 250 per kid from the truck drivers, and then our Walmart gave them an additional 100, on top of a tablet for them as well. So what was kind of cool with Emily is, in June, she's actually going to Seattle for the USA Games for Special Olympics, she was chosen, I believe she's doing track and field, so she's been training for that, so she bought a lot of stuff for her trip that she gets to go on. Each of the people that go from, that go out to the USA Games, they each have to raise 3,000, so part of, I think part of that too, she put on her own tab, she worked it out with Terry up at Walmart, but, so yeah, they've spent that whole Saturday shopping in Walmart, buying a bunch of stuff. On Sunday, we had a basketball tournament down in Union, and she walked in with some new bling that she had bought the day before that she was pretty super proud about, that I had to tell her that she had to put in her bag because I want to play basketball. So yeah, and Terry couldn't make it tonight, he had another engagement that he had to go to, but he's planning on trying to do this, if not every year, every other year, and he was completely blown away by the response of the first responders that showed up to help out with this, because normally, it's just the truck drivers, the truck drivers really didn't know that we were coming, they were just going to do it themselves, and so they were more than ecstatic when all of us showed up to help out with these two girls, so, so that was really cool. The Polar Plunge, that's coming up, I know you guys may have seen something on the news, that was Lake St. Louis, we're going to be going to the one in, at Creve Court Lake in Maryland Heights on the 24th of this month. I'm actually doing two, I will be doing the one on the 24th with some teachers from the district, as well as on the 23rd, I will be jumping in a cattle trough full of ice water at Blackhawk, because it's our second annual Plunge the SRO, that's what I did last year to raise my money, and right, as of last year, the middle school brought in $684 to send me to the plunge, I took an athlete with us, I tried getting another athlete this year, but none of them were wanting to partake in it, they said it was too cold. So I put it out to all the teachers, and with, as of right now, we're at $600, and I still have five more days to collect money from them. So with that, I've made sure all the teachers were covered as far as their registration fee, and then as well as mine, so if you guys, there's still time, if you guys want to join, it only costs you $75, or I can spot you $75 if you want me to, if you would like to go on the 24th with us. Also, this is a pretty cool thing, because I've been involved with it, LT and Chief have been great with me being a part of this. On April 15, it's the first of its kind in this, well, not in this area, they were doing it at the Chesterfield Airport, but now we have Lambert 100% on board with us, and it's going to be called STL Day on the Runway, and what we're doing there is, on April 15, it's a Sunday, we will be out on the runway that goes over Lindbergh there at Lambert. In the morning, we'll start off with a 5K run, that goes on those two tarmacs that we'll be on, we'll have a family festival with different things, food trucks and stuff for families, kids, we'll have some kid area, we're getting mator from cars for the kids to pull, and then as well is the big event, which is the Plane Pull, FedEx is letting us use an Airbus 300, and teams of 15 to 25 people are getting together to pull it for the best time. So we actually have a team, I already started, I got Chief O'Nebees on it, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, Mayor and Chief, but I got Chief O'Nebee on it, a guy from county's on it, one of our local tow companies, the owner, he's on my team, a couple of my family members are getting ready to join, and some other people from church, so if you guys want to join, it's only a $25 registration fee, and yeah, it's an all-day event. With that, I'm actually the one that's in charge of the festival, I got a committee of officers and people from the airport that we've been putting this committee together, so I've been spending some time down at the airport, and down in the Special Olympic Office in St. Louis, getting it all put together, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun, I mean, just to be able to go out and do a 5K on the runway is even just cool, I mean, I might even do it, and I don't like running, so if any of you guys want to partake in that, I'm still looking for team members, because like I said, I got to get at least 15 people, so right now I'm at five. And then last, and then I'm going to get out of here, so you guys can continue, is we have our 10th Annual Torch Run coming up in May. The weeks are set for which days to pick out of those weeks through the state, but I have not yet set a date, because I'm waiting to hear from Highway Patrol, that they always start at Ameristar, and come all the way out to Wright City, and they hand off the torch to us. Well, in the years past, it's always been two days after, week after, or the week before, and so for me, I don't feel it's kind of common sense, it needs to be the same time that they're going to be out here. I'd like to do it that same day, but then that would put us back here about 6:00 PM, so I'm going to try to get rid of it the next day after them. I'll be hearing from them, this Thursday, they're setting, they're getting with Ameristar and setting that date, and then we'll be able to set our date, and then we'll be able to get our party going. So, I think I talked kind of fast, did I, Gabe?
Quick question. The day on the runway was April 15?
April 15, yep, and we'll be starting at 9:00 AM, if you're going to run, you need to be there by 7:30, we'll start registration, and then we'll kick it off, the family festival will kick off at 9:00 as well, the run actually ends at the festival, it starts on one side of the festival, goes around and ends at the other end of the festival, and then we'll have the family festival all day long, and then the plane pulls all day long as well, so.
When was the Polar Plunge?
The 24th. The 24th, yep. And I got that set up to where we're actually going to be jumping with the handicap service, they got a team as well, so I talked to the lady at Somo, and she's going to put us back-to-back, either they're going to go first, then us, or us, we're going to go first, and then they're going to be there, so in that way, we're with our athletes that are participating from the handicap service, so.
I understand there's a lot more Special Olympic athletes participating in the program, and we're just been for quite a while.
Yeah, so we've merged, we kind of got, our hands were kind of tied, we merged the school with the handicap service, and so as of right now, we're actually hurting for coaches for basketball, and they're getting ready to start up some of the spring sports, but I think we have 85 athletes right now that are participating throughout the county, so.
I'd like to nominate our mayor to participate in the Polar Plunge.
I didn't know there was nominations.
I think there's a second.
I don't know. I'll do the Plane Pull.
Are you sure that like, with that right there, isn't that like set in stone?
No, it is, absolutely. But I'm sure Gary would like to do the Polar Plunge, and I'll do the Plane Pull.
You outrank me.
Give me the registration for the Plane Pull, and I'll do it.
Okay.
For sure. I've done the Polar Plunge, and I'm going to tell you, once in life, that experience you remember.
Well, see, last year, the water at the school was colder than the lake, so there's something to look for.
Really?
Well, I put 30 pounds of ice in it, which was kind of dumb on my part, but I can make that happen again, so it's a little bit easier for you.
No, not for me.
Because you can come out that Friday and jump in there with me.
No.
I mean, your daughter would love it, she's already been talking it up.
I think I got married.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
I'll watch, if I need to, just to supervise and make sure you're okay.
Yeah.
No, definitely, at least by April 15, give me the application, I'll...
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for all you did.
Next, we have Wilson Waste and Meridian Trash Contract with Keith Wilson and Chuck Barkum, is that correct?
I'm Keith Wilson, and obviously Wilson Waste. What I wanted to do is let you guys know that I had sold the company the 5th of January to Meridian Waste Services. One of the things that Terry wanted me to kind of go over with you guys is the why I sold the company, and I want to go over that real quick with you. A lot of it has to do with just the cost factors involved in running a small company and so forth, for example, like new trucks are over $200,000 apiece, and it doesn't take long to start going through a bunch of money in a hurry when you're dealing with that kind of stuff, and so it was just something that I decided to do with the cost factor of operating and trying to do stuff that we're trying to do so much, it was just to provide better service for the customer base, and probably what really needs to be done for the employees, it was just something I decided to do. For example, they have, the health insurance program they have is, in Meridian is way better than what we had, we only had 23, 24 employees, so for us to provide health insurance for those, you know, their cost factor for them, we would cover 60%, they would cover 40% of themselves, and that payment would be almost $40 a week, where the new program they have in place is like $6 a week, for better service, better, you know, health insurance and so forth. So it does come down to a lot of different stuff that we had to work on and deal with on it. Meridian is not, this humongous company, it's, you know, it's got millions and millions and millions of customers, they're a smaller company when it comes to trash business, but at the same time, they're a lot bigger than I was to be able to be more efficient in what they're doing, and Chuck can kind of go over all that stuff with you and what we're dealing with on, and I know he had sent, him and Terry had talked about doing some minor modifications to what you guys are doing and what's being serviced at this point. So I did sell them the LLC, but staff was wanting you guys to see this and kind of go over more of what they're wanting to do with it, so I appreciate everything the city has done, some of you guys have been here for a while, some of you are new, but you guys have been a great city to work with, and I really appreciate it, and like I said, it's something that, you know, I'm still working for them, I'm not going anywhere, so it's kind of what they're doing with everything they got going on, so I do really appreciate everything you guys have done with this in the past and everything on it. So I'll hand it over to Chuck now.
How you doing? My name's Chuck Barkum, and I, just to give you a quick scenario about us, I started Meridian in 2005 with me and one truck, and I grew it to about 50,000 residential customers, running about 80 trucks, and then I was approached by a gentleman by the name of Jeff Cosman, and he bought me back in May of '14. I've stayed on since then and ran the entire area, and since then, we bought out Christian Disposal and merged those two companies together, and then we were lucky enough and fortunate enough to be able to do this acquisition with Keith. You know, we still have a very large footprint here, we're running about 115,000 residential customers now, doing about 10 front-load routes with the commercial front loaders, and doing about 10, 10 and, 10 and a half, they like to say, it's 11 trucks for roll-offs, so I mean, we have a decent footprint. We, I built the company on service, and my job now is to look at ways to, like when I was, with Terry and the rest of your staff, my, my job now is to find out better ways to partner with, with you guys on your solid waste needs, so I'm going to be looking for ways that you guys are looking for to improve the system. I think one of the things we're going to do right off the get-go is, we're going to put some recycling carts out, we'll give some choices on that, you have an event that we're going to go ahead and take care of and make sure that's done right. But my, my whole purpose in what I do for the company now is to look for ways to improve on what we can do to partner with the cities and look for ways to improve your solid waste needs. It really starts with service, and Keith's done a great job, that's the reason why I focused on trying to get this acquisition done, but as we move forward, I'm going to find ways from you guys, because you're in the community, I live out this way, I live off of 40 in Wing Haven, in the unincorporated section, so I'm out here all the time and driving around and looking at things, but you guys live in the community, and it's going to be with you guys and your staff, it's, they're going to fill me with information that I need to, and what you guys need, to show where we can come out and improve things and make things better. You know, we do have the capability of getting trucks quicker. Keith is right, some trucks are, you know, for a rear-load truck now, you're looking at about 200 grand. I, we, the trucks that I run are the side loaders, and they run about $300,000. You have the arm that comes out and grabs it, I don't like the ones that come up over the top, because air can blow, if somebody uses a bag and it comes up, the higher up it goes, the more wind it catches, things like that, so I like using the side loaders that only got to come up four feet and then go in through the side, you have all the wind blocking you over here, you only have one gondola truck, not two, so there's the cost savings for, for the company as far as the automation and the arms, you know, those arms are about nine seconds per home, and it's just simple math, how many homes you can get on the trucks and things like that, but for, for us, it's all about what does this community need, what would you guys like to see, and how can we improve it on what's currently being done. I'm going to be out here, I'm available 24/7, I'm going to leave a stack of cards here, guys, and when I tell you I'm available 24/7, I truly mean that. We mess up, I got to know about it, because I can't fix it if I don't know, so I stay in constant communication with people and just say, hey, you know, what am I doing wrong, what am I doing right, tell me where we need to show the improvements.
Well, since you brought that up, I don't know if we can do it under this change, or will we look to, I guess the contract's up until December 19. I've had a number of people ask if there could be trash pickup on the same day there is recycle pickup.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it's, it, my house, we have grass pickup too, so I'm trying to figure out which day is what, if I didn't have a memory better than mine, I'd be putting the wrong stuff out, but that's a pretty common request that I hear, is if we could do all the pickups on one day, it would just make things easier for the homeowner.
We can, we can look at that fairly quickly, I mean, when, when I took those Christian acquisitions over, we just, we just started, the first of next month, I get to sign, I was fortunate enough to keep the Lake St. Louis bid, and they, Christian was doing trash on these days, and recycling on this day, and yard waste on this day, and bulk on this day, and I like to come down, it's easier on your streets and your, and the customers, we pick up everything on one day, we're in here, let's get it done, it's less wear and tear on your streets, still the same amount of trucks, but we're all in here on one day. If I come into an area, then I, once that area is done, from a safety perspective, there's not kids out there and things like that, so yeah, we can look at changing that easily, that's, that's an easy fix, you know, you just have to divide your city up, and I haven't looked at all the days, you just simply say, okay, you know, Ward 1, we're going to do on this day, Ward 2, we'll do on this day, Ward 3, you do on this day, and you just change it up, and you divide it by how many homes are in that ward, and how many days you want to do it, I mean, maybe we can do the whole city in one day, maybe we take three days, maybe it takes three, it's just a matter of looking at how many, how many actual customers have each different service, and changing that, so that's, that's not a problem.
Great.
Chuck, one of the things I like on this, I see you're, you look probably an option at providing a little bit smaller recycling carts at free charge, and it's been one of my things for several years, it seems like if there's one place this town is lax, we don't have a lot of people participating in the recycling program, and I don't know if that's because of the charge for the recycling, for the upsized recycling bins or what, but anything I think you could do from your side to help us promote recycling more would definitely be advantageous for probably both of us.
Yeah, I think the first thing we need to do on that is when you start providing the recycling carts, and then, and then shortly after that, we'll do some type of mailing or something that shows people what's recyclable and what's not, because there's still a lot of confusion, everybody looks at, say, say, plastic for instance, everybody thinks those plastic white lawn chairs that you buy, they crush them up, put them in recycling, that's not recyclable, wrong plastic, little types trucks and things like that, the little kids' toys, those aren't recyclable, so the thing that you have to do is educate the people on what is recyclable, and then you start, start out with smaller bins, and if we have to go to a larger one, as, as things, as, as the volumes pick up, then it's just you change the cart out and move on. The nice thing about having the smaller carts are, you have seniors that have smaller garages, they don't generate enough to have a big 95 gallon and roll it out, so we started offering the 35, 65, and 95s, and we do that in every community we're in, and it's just an easier way to start the program. Once you start getting participation and people actually see how easy it is, then you start getting a lot of people to follow up, and how you can do that, real simple, is you'll run your, run your areas, and everything's done by routes, so on this route, you track how much recycling, how much trash you're getting, and you find where your weakest area is, and you start trying to figure out ways to entice recycling there, and increase your volumes, and then you just keep working on those areas until you get everybody where you want.
I happen to think that recycling is something that is instilled in you, or it's not, something you believe in, or you don't think it's worthwhile, and I've been on this board when we had free recycling, and now it's, we charge for it, and I'm proud to say that we've recycled in both instances, and we use the same size dumpster for our recycle as we do our regular trash, and Keith's company was good enough to provide us a sticker to put on the recycling, and we actually have more recyclables than we do regular trash.
Sure.
And so, and I think, and I don't disagree with what Mike has said, particularly for the seniors, I think it makes sense to give them a smaller recycle container, but I really think whether it's when I'm on this board or when I'm not, I think the council really needs to look at going back to free recycling, because I think if you look at the statistics, that's when it dropped. So we have to decide as a city if recycling is really something that we're, we're a believer in, and I realize it's an additional cost, but it seems to me that when we went to charging for the recycling, that there was a drop-off in numbers that were reusing recycling.
Do you anticipate, moving forward, that we go to some kind of container for waste? Because right now, people are just dragging whatever they have onto the streets.
Sure.
Which I assume requires staff to load the truck, but if you see a system, like my daughter works at Lewis and Maplewood, they come down the street, nobody gets out of the truck, it just picks and goes, and they just go as fast as they can pick up, and do you anticipate it, us getting to that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, at some point, I mean, the easiest way to, to do anything is, we provide the carts for trash, we provide the carts for recycling, and you come down there and, you know, it's automation, and you can, there are several ways to do... do that. To go fully automated is, is a task. St. Louis County has tried it for the very first time this year. And I got to tell you, you get to a people, a community that's used to unlimited garbage. And now all of a sudden, you tell them, here's a 90 gallon cart and that's all you get. And anything above that cart, there's a charge. Is a learning process and a lot of, a lot of complaints. So, the easiest way to do that would be to start with, everybody gets a cart free and you, there is no charge for it. And you have extra, just put your can, set it next to it. What I have found, and I've got a lot of, a lot of larger cities, Florissant, Wildwood, most people will only generate a 90, 95 gallons worth of trash. The other thing that we'll look at doing out here is bulk. There are, every community now, when you, when you have trash service, you, you let them take a bulk out. One big bulk item a week, be it a couch, a mattress, or whatever, and that just comes in with it. There's no extra charge for it. So, there's all kinds of things you can do to get to where that kind of service becomes available. Carts is just another, another way to partner with your city. One, it keeps the trash cleaned up. Two, it protects me. Because if my arm comes down and if I'm putting those trucks out here, my arm comes down and it squeezes it, you went out and bought a can, it costs you 60 bucks. That arm squeezes them later, it breaks it. I'm going to get a call from you saying you broke my can. I want my 60 bucks. If I put the, and I had to, I've done, I've had to deal with this. If I buy the cart, I have a 10-year warranty. It costs me 60 bucks for the cart. I got it for 10 years. If I break it, they got to give me another one for 10 years free. That's the reason why all your companies out there now are looking to put carts out there. Because simply if a guy grabs it, and especially in the weathers we've had now, and something gets stuck in there, first thing you want to do is bang it off the sidewalk. It's going to crack that thin plastic. Or if my arm grabs it and it happens to be a defect in the material that day, it's going to crack it. If I have to buy the can, if I spend 60 bucks on, on a can that, that you brought and we tore it up and we should pay for it, it's going to take me four or five months to pay for that house. Realistically, it's, you know, if you figure 15 bucks a home, how long is it going to take me to pay for that can that I'm picking up garbage for free that my guy broke? That's how I look at it. So, from our perspective, the more we can put things that, that we can control, the better off we are as far as costs go. I mean, there's a cost upfront to do it. But once again, it's called partnering with your communities and trying to make things better. Keeps you guys more uniformed. It keeps, it allows us to pick up more homes per, in a shorter amount of time. And it keeps things organized and you don't have trash and let it blow them. Because if you get a heavier wind, those carts are harder to blow over because of the way the wheels set and they're spread out in the way it is to where a normal trash can can just blow over. So, it keeps things cleaned up also.
It appears that you also agreed to help out with the fall festival?
Yes. That's a thing that I've always done. City of Florissant, I, I worked their fall festival and their spring festival. Wildwood has a barbecue bash. I don't know if you guys have ever been down to that. They have this barbecue competition that there's 300 vendors. And for, for three days, there's a barbecue competition. They have a concert. We staff it. We pick everything up. I have guys that walk around and empty the trash all day. I stayed at truck at this end and this end, usually one more over here. And all my guys do is all day long and all night for two shifts. It's just simply walk around and keep the grounds cleaned. That was an easy thing. As soon as she, Brandy brought that up, it was like, yeah, guys, we do that. This is a relative, I mean, there's 60,000 people to show up for that event. We can, that's something that we've gotten fairly good at. I mean, that over the last 12 years I've been out there, when we first did that event, the city paid somewhere around $11,000 in overtime. And by the time it was over with, they, they don't spend anything anywhere near that type of money. I mean, it's under a thousand bucks to staff and do what they need to do. So, I mean, it, that's something that I've, I love doing. It's, once again, partnering with you guys in, in those type of events. Shows what, it's good advertisement for us and it's good partnering with the community. It's a good way to put your name out there also. I mean, there are selfish reasons to do it, absolutely.
You probably had some good barbecue in that time, too.
In that time? Yeah. We've actually got to where you cook in the competition. Now, we've been out there so much. So, you started in a competition. Just, we've done fairly well at it, too. I mean, I've got sixth place in ribs. And so, I mean, we've done, we've learned how to do it.
Good, good. Well, I'm excited about you coming in, coming into the community and hopefully can develop a good partnership. And I think the citizens will really look forward that service as an upgrade. It's an exciting time.
I appreciate it, guys. Like I said, I'll leave my cards here with Brandy and them. 24/7, guys, I truly, truly mean that. If there's, if there's something, I can't fix where I don't know is going on. So, I, I don't care how small it is. If I know about it, we'll get it turned around and figure it out real quick what it is. I'd, I'd like to tell you things, you know, we're perfect or not. Things happen. And it's, it's how you respond to when things go bad is how, is when I think you shine. Weathers and stuff like that's always issues. But if you, if you partner with you guys and do things the right way, it can be, it can, when mistakes happen and they're fixed, it's not a big deal. It's when they don't get fixed is when things turn around and go bad. So, I'm, I'm very good at, at making sure that we partner with people. I, Florissant, I've had, this is the third time I do five-year contracts with them and they haven't been out to bid in 15 years. You're going to keep that community of 18,000 people to where they're not calling the city and making complaints. It's partnering with them the right way. And that's what I'd love the opportunity to do with you guys.
And not to, not to give Keith the shirt under the stick or anything, but we do, we did have a good working relationship with him. And so, it's kind of good that you're keeping him on board.
I hope Keith was with us for a long time. I, I said, when they bought me, I didn't plan on going anywhere. And it's been four years and I'm still here. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with Keith. We actually got to know each other before this, just by bidding different things that they come up and being in. And I, I look forward to working with Keith for a very long time.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This will be a bill later on, bill on the agenda later on.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next item will be the Montgomery County Public Water Supply District, number one, development agreement. And as well, this will be a bill later on the agenda.
So, I'm here to explain that shortly. The, this, as you guys are aware, we entered into a development agreement for the north side of the interstate, the proposed redevelopment area that the, the roundabout will basically serve. Part of that redevelopment agreement, it did not have adequate utility service. That is in the Montgomery County water, public water supply and sewer district. So, in order to get both sewer and water there to that property, as you guys are aware, we had the first component of the utility agreement come through, which was the sewer where we're going to sell the bulk sewer to them as a customer. And they're going to service that client. And that agreement's already been approved by both entities. This is the second component of it, which is the water line and the water service. So, we know that they have adequate water service to provide to the property. So, we can meet our obligation under the development agreement and also to really try to spur growth up there. So, this is essentially, we're going to pay for Montgomery County to run a 12-inch main parallel to their current, is it a six or eight inch main?
I believe it's six inch.
Eight inch.
Yeah.
So, then we would run 12-inch parallel.
Yeah. There was some confusion if it was a six or eight, but essentially.
And they might, they might have came back and said it was an eight. But it was before they were told it was six inch. But then they maybe came back and told Terry it was an eight.
Yeah. We, we understand it was an eight inch main. But regardless.
Yeah. So, 12-inch parallel line to their existing eight inch.
Yeah. So, this is essentially the second component for our utility obligation under the redevelopment agreement, which is part of how we got the right of way donated. And really, I just have to say this, you know, it's been a really good working relationship to get these utilities done with Montgomery County. They've been great to work with. And, you know, it's exciting that, you know, we're going to cooperate with them to provide utilities for the development on the north side of the city. Because, you know, they have some things that we don't. We have some stuff that they don't. And, you know, it's really going to be, you know, ready, ready to develop when the developers are ready to come to the city.
And councillor, have we involved the warranted fire protection district?
We've absolutely involved the fire protection district. One of the things that was, there was a meeting that was held that I believe was at city hall that Terry put together with the engineers, the water district, our city engineers, the water district, and also the engineer for the developer to look at the project to make sure, I mean, it's a very ambitious project to make sure that the water was there. The chief O N B expressed some concerns about the adequateness of the eight inch water line. And so, we did our own analysis of it. And although we feel as though as this develops and phases the eight inch water main, we'll be able to service the, the property up there for the total development and the total utilities. This 12-inch main is going to be necessary and also can be used to service additional developments within their district that are outside of the development area. And I, and of course, as Terry always does, there's always a kicker she gets for the city where they're going to provide free water, our water at no cost for our irrigation on the highway. So, for the roundabout, or the, the roundabouts and also for the area where the landscaping that we're investing the money from the sales tax into.
So, in your mind today, this agreement will get us where we need to be for future development?
Absolutely.
And so, there should be no issue when, when the companies come courting and, and we're trying to put new business out there. And so, in your mind, you don't believe there's any need for an elevated water tank?
No, no. I mean, and Guy, you can speak to that as well.
They have a tower west of, right at a mile away.
Okay. I think this is more of a preemptive approach.
Yeah.
Development.
I would say it's not only preemptive. I think it's overly, it's, it's being overly cautious to make sure that we meet not only our obligation, but we can cert, there's going to be water service provided to that area. So.
Well, you know, I think most of the board, I wasn't aware of this until I came back on the board, that this project, the entire interchange, interchange project came in significantly under budget. So, if we're going to have an issue, this would be the time to fix it. So, that's, I mean, as long as you and Terry and Guy are, are good with it, and the fire department sounds like they are, that no need to spend money that we don't, don't have to.
And like I said, once again, this will be a bill later on the agenda. But if you have any questions now, it'd be the time to ask them.
Appreciate the work you and Terry have both done on this and on very.
Yeah. Like I said, they've been great to work with. It's really, I mean, it's exciting because it's really going to help us, you know, working with our surrounding districts is going to help the city grow.
Any other questions?
Excellent.
All right. Move on to the discussion topic, which will be the draft on the golf court, golf cart ordinance. So, would you explain, I guess councillor, you do this. It's your stuff. Some's highlighting y'all, some's highlighting blue, some's plain. And the theory behind this is?
The chief did the highlighting. So, we'll ask you.
Terry did.
Oh, Terry did it. Okay.
This is, the highlighted is the sections that are from the federal standard. The non-highlighted sections are parts that we've added in to make this applicable to our situation.
Okay. So, the add-ons of the, of the stuff that's not marked?
Correct.
So, we're not here to vote on this ordinance tonight. This is for review and discussion.
Right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Basically, see, they added some of the things that we spoke about last time we discussed this. I think the important part of it is getting highlighted some of the, the things that we needed.
I think we addressed the driver's license issue in this. That was a big issue that we had last time.
Well, I think it's a, a lot to digest and understand. And if the rest of the board is agreeable, I'd like to take a, till next meeting and review it. Everybody come back and make sure we've thought it out properly. Appreciate the chief, all your work and effort to, so we're not recreating the wheel.
And you know, that's, that's my one question I have, really. With the things that are added and the things you've gone through, how comfortable are you with this?
The way that it sits now, I'm fairly comfortable with it.
Well, I know that speaks a lot to me. So, so we have sections in here that talk about you can't operate the vehicle in a park. I'm assuming the intent is vehicles should be operated on roads, not on, on grounds.
Correct.
That's what that's said in there to me. So, you could drive your vehicle into the park as long as you stay on a road. Is that what that means? It doesn't, I mean, you know, so if somebody was to drive their vehicle into the park to go to the swimming pool, take their grandkid or whatever, they would be okay. But if they were off trail, decided to go wherever, that would be wrong, correct? Is that how this reads?
Unless the, the trail, that'd be a question for Brad. The trails at Binkley Woods, if they have an exception already for motor vehicles.
I doubt that the trail, trails at Binkley Woods would allow the low-speed vehicles.
Well, I don't think you'd want them at Binkley Woods trails. I'm just saying, I mean, you could go even to the new park, you could go off.
Absolutely. Yes.
And I don't think the intent is to do that. That's just, you can come into the park with your vehicle, but you, you have to stay on road.
Correct.
Can't go in the pathways. You can't just create your own pathways.
Just like a car, we're letting it on the road, it stays on the road.
Would you like to see it more clearly defined in there? No, I just wanted to, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that's what that meant.
And maybe, maybe that's next couple of weeks, we'll review it.
I think that's, it's time to digest it, so to speak.
So, if somebody, kind of just another question, just, just thinking through this for a second. So, if you have a low-speed vehicle and you're coming from, let's say, Wright City or outside the city limits into town, you would have to stay off 47 because you can only hit those lettered highways and numbered highways as a cross point. So, if somebody were to drive up the North Service Road, then they really would be kind of restricted to getting across, how would they cross the interchange if they wanted to come and shock the snooks for example?
Pretty broad language for crossing.
Yeah.
It's got a pretty broad definition under the statute for crossing of state roadways to get from point A to B.
That's registration.
It's under six.
Say honestly, that's a question I really thought about. I mean, those are the things I saw. I was kind of glancing through this. And you're right, Greg, we have done a lot of thinking about this. But, I mean, those are the things I saw that, you know, I'm trying to find the section we talked about.
Crossing is under section six, C6. And that's from the statute, their language for crossing of the roadways. If you do regulate it, you have to allow them to cross the state highways.
So, would that prohibit somebody from going down 47 to get across the interchange bridge or the interstate bridge? Or is?
I think it's a below.
Well, first of all, you're limiting it to a, a state highway with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less. And then only to directly cross a portion of, of a state highway system which intersects a municipal street.
So, one, it has to be 35 miles an hour or less.
So, Highway 47 is 35 miles an hour or less.
Well, not north.
You have a.
You couldn't. There can't be on, yeah.
You can't be on it going north because the speed's too high. But if you're going through town, I don't know what the speed limit is through town.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. You'd be okay. Thirty. So, you'd be okay going down town. Okay.
Till you get to around the area of Dogwood.
Well, and if south would be just past the administration of the.
Right.
Okay.
So, it's a good section that it'd be okay at.
Yeah. But then it would give somebody the flexibility, if you're on the north side of town, being able to cross over, do something on the south side of town, being on the, being on Highway 47. We have that. Okay.
Should be okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I guess we'll chew, chew on it a little bit and ask for it beyond when we're done discussing it. All right. Next item will be speaking with assistant director of operations, Brandy Walters.
The first thing that I have on the agenda is my monthly marketing and business support report. We had three ribbon cuttings last month. I know that some of you went to those. It was Double J Auto Parts, Lindsay Photography, and Victor World. And then I wanted to let you guys know that Legacy And then I wanted to let you guys know that Legacy Pharmacy, they're having their ribbon cutting on March 10th, and they encourage any of you guys to come to that, it's on a Saturday. I believe at 10 o'clock. And I think there isn't that kind of a big deal, like a fire department coming and all kinds of stuff. 10.
So, what's that date again?
March 10.
March 10.
Mm-hmm.
You'll be sending out a reminder.
Yes, I will.
Good idea.
Hey, not just for me.
No, it's not.
All right, the next thing that I have is the monthly admin report. And we're starting off the year good, no accidents so far. We had 26 safety talk trainings among different departments. And then we are currently working on the newsletter. Hopefully, that'll be getting out in the next couple of weeks to all the residents.
Any questions on that?
Okay, and then the last thing I have is the services contract for North 47. And this is through CMT for the sidewalk and traffic study. And this is the preliminary engineering, so it would be, they would pretty much take us all the way up to, not full construction plans, but up to about 30% on the construction plans, this, this contract would.
Was there a timeframe on this? I don't remember looking in the bill.
I don't think we had an exact timeframe on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's nothing on the bill that says a timeframe? Yeah, there's no bill on it, so.
No, we didn't have an exact timeframe on there.
And, and so, the cost is 99,008.45 estimated.
Correct.
And I presume that we would pay that over the period of time of, of, if the work was completed.
Right, as they complete it, we'll pay it. One of the things we had talked about doing was moving the purchase of that house over. So, that's going to take care of 90,000 there.
Right. So, probably just for people in the general public to know what they're going to do. One of the first things we're going to do is look at traffic counts to make an assessment if there's, needs to be a turn lane, a major sections along the corridor. There's going to be, I guess, a drone survey of the entire area to look at the terrain and topography. We're going to do some detailed boundary studies, looking at the right of access, where it may be done. Let's look at potential locations for sidewalks along the corridor. Get some estimated costs on various sidewalk options, conceptual plans on preferred sidewalk plan, traffic study of major intersections along the corridor, and then a summary of all the work we can put together. And then we're also looking at preparing a cost share application with MoDOT and creating up to 15 easement plots along the corridor. So, that's quite a bit of work in detail in the contract that I think gets us going. I mean, I think the crucial part to my mind is the easement side, because you're going to have to get easements. And as soon as we can get some hands around that, we can start addressing that issue.
Right.
But even, I mean, to me, it was even, like what you said with the cost share program, that can be a very tough program to try and put together paperwork, and these guys are very skilled at what to do with that.
Right, right.
It may, who goes for that, and I'm glad that they included that with that. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of ironic in some sense that it's in there, cost share application. You do it because you should do it, but when the state sits there and says, we have no money, it's kind of like applying an application for no money, but we still need to have due diligence and get it, because there is some kind of funding, we need to take advantage of it. Because when we had that meeting, I was surprised to mention, that they mentioned that there are some still out there that we can actually apply for. So, I was impressed that they actually brought that up, and I'd love to take advantage of it if we can do that. And to only to the point where it doesn't hold the project up. That's, that's mine.
Well, I think it's back to that phrase, you don't know what you don't know. And, and, you know, we've got people actually offered to donate easement, and we don't know how much easement we need, and we won't know until, until the study is done. The other phrase that we, many of us heard for eight to 10 years was shovel-ready jobs. And, you know, we have such conversation at the federal level now about infrastructure projects. I think it would be, it would be who the city have warranted to be in a position that we know the cost of a job, that the engineering is done, and you could at least that way apply for it and be first in the line instead of being behind the eight ball and want to access some of that funding, but not have any plans put together. And I'll remind this board and the public that the current interchange, we, we started working on in 2001. And this board and a lot of boards, had they not stuck to it, we wouldn't see that nearing completion this year. So, I know it looks like a lot of money, but I don't, again, you don't know what you don't know until we, we get some engineering under our belt. I don't know what's available.
I noticed it says here, cost estimates for each component will be developed, which will allow separate phases and options to be considered, which is good.
Are there any questions on this? So, if the interchange started in 2001, and this is 2018, I hope this project won't take that long.
Yeah, I, I hope you're not counting on any votes over this being completed.
No, I'm not, but I also think that we won't have the opposition on this project. No, I don't believe so.
That should speed up the process significantly.
Do you have any questions on this? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with CMT in the amount of 99,845 dollars for the Route 47 sidewalk and traffic study.
So moved.
Second.
All right, hold on. So moved, it was by you. Give it to.
Gary Harvey.
Gary and Gary. Motion made by Alden Knox, signed by Alden Miller. Vote, vote, please.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Deloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all you have, all right. Next one, from Finance Manager, Jeffrey O'Curry.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month in the amount of $1,315,719.53. There were some invoices on here for the Aquatic Center, which is, sorry, what pushed that number up? You're good.
That's the question. Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $1,315,719.53.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Deloy, signed by Aldman Castello. Vote, vote, please.
Aldman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Deloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
The next item I have is the financial report for December. So, you'll notice on there that the sales tax at the end of December is over budget by $12,471, which January looks, looks good also. Also on here, the real estate, personal property tax, we normally get a chunk in December, and then we get another big chunk in January. So, the amount received in December was lower than expected by $64,188. After the January post, though, we are just under budget about $6,200, so that's in good shape also.
Cash flow.
Yes, cash flow.
Any questions? She covered the two questions I had on the sales tax and, on the sales tax and the personal property tax. They jumped out, because if you recall, last time we looked at the sales tax, we were minus 7%, which was kind of scary, and then all of a sudden you recover, so that's, makes you feel better.
That looks good. The last item I have is the Ways and Means Work Session. This is the meeting where we talk about the water and sewer rate target amount, percentage, and also the payroll. And so, we're wanting to schedule that as March 6th available. That would be before the next board meeting at 5:30, or before the first March board meeting.
Okay. What are you doing there? I'm available more.
It's 5:30.
5:30?
On March 6th.
I'm good on March 6th. Are you going to get a problem with it? Nope, I'm good.
An email will come, be forthcoming.
A reminder?
Yeah.
I don't see any. I need reminders of this under the table, the other end. I don't see an objection March 6th.
All right, perfect.
Speak for yourself.
All right, great, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, Bill's ordinance. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 05-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schell Harvey, signed by Aldman Castello.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative development agreement between Montgomery County Public Water Supply District Number One and the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 05-18.
So moved.
All right, hold on. Two people said it. Who said it down there? Gary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative development agreement between Montgomery County Public Water Supply District Number One and the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Vote, vote, please.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Deloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Schell Harvey?
Yes. Bill passes six zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading and Bill Number 06-18.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Aldman Deloy, signed by Aldman, oh, I'm sorry, oh.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to Services Contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Wilson Waste Systems, LLC, providing Meridian Waste, Missouri, LLC as the new service provider for refuse, recycling, and yard waste collection.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 06-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Castello.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to Services Contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Wilson Waste Systems, LLC, providing Meridian Waste, Missouri, LLC as the new service provider for refuse, recycling, and yard waste collection.
Vote, vote, please.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Deloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Bill passes six zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and a motion made by Aldman Castello, signed by Aldman Schell Harvey. Hold on, hold on.
Aye, aye.
And we are so adjourned, folks.